Screen share. Do I have to put this stuff up?
What are you wanting to share?
I don't know. I just thought that that was gonna be my responsibility.
No, I think it's calling on people in the audience and letting them speak when they raise their hands.
Okay, got it.
That's too hard to do on a phone.
Got it.
Maybe impossible.
Okay.
And just so that, uh, just so that you know, Steve, where we're at, uh, so we stopped in the middle of my presentation, but at some point, we gotta go back to public comment because I think that skipped over. And then I think, uh, there was possibly one attendee that had a comment on Kitty's presentation as well. So we may need to go back to that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Is everybody now in the building?
Yep.
Everybody, we've kind of lost, we've lost a couple of attendees.
And I think we're missing, uh, Commissioner Berenger as well.
Okay. Joyce, go ahead.
Uh, is it possible to finish, uh, Carlos's report before?
I agree. Let's do that.
Yeah.
And we, and so we're gonna resume the meeting. We do have a quorum. We've lost Jim. Uh, but we're gonna keep going. Carlos, you wanna finish where you were going?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So the last item that I just wanted to report to the Prose Commission and the community is an update on the dog park. And as the commission knows, um, the Facilities and Resources Department has taken over management of that park for about five years. Um, sadly, to report back in April, I received the news that Tim Roach, um, longstanding Prose Commissioner and, uh, really one of the people that spearheaded the move from the, uh, dog park on Main Street over to the Honeymoon Ranch. He passed away back in April. I had a discussion with his son, uh, and we're working on trying to get some, some information, uh, that he had about the dog park, uh, back to us so that we can, we can move forward there. Um, so as far as the dog park itself, uh, as you know, as I mentioned, we've, we've been, uh, working, um, on managing the dog park, which includes basically the day-to-day operations, picking up trash, mowing, providing wood shifts, covering any expenses that the dog park had, uh, making repairs, refilling the tanks, water tanks, um, et cetera. Uh, if you've been to the dog park, you have probably noticed that there is a good amount of people using the dog park, uh, both locally and tourist, uh, so the interest at the dog park is there. Uh, for the last couple of months, I've been working with a, a local user of the park by the name of Shelley Becker. Uh, she's a fantastic, um, dog park user. Uh, she is, uh, very much willing and has been working to reestablish a board and create a volunteer program for the dog park, uh, so they can take on some of the maintenance duties that, uh, we have been, uh, doing. We have had several meetings at the dog park the last couple of months. Uh, we had excellent attendance, uh, over fifteen people with a lot of happy dogs out there, uh, also interested in the park. Um, all of these folks that showed up, uh, had excellent questions, comments. Uh, they were willing to volunteer, uh, both as board members and also, uh, to volunteer to help with, uh, the work around the, uh, dog park and also to fundraise for some of the improvements for the park. Uh, so right now there is a, uh, a board that has been formed for the dog park. Uh, they are currently working on reestablishing their membership with Slow Post. So that is the next goal that they have, uh, and, uh, if you are interested, interested, um, uh, about the dog park or you're interested in volunteering, uh, the next meeting, uh, for the dog park is gonna be next Wednesday, August tenth at four thirty at the dog. So happy news on that end of the dog park and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Carlos? Julie?
Yeah, Carlos, quick question. I just, I'm curious to know roughly what the cost of operating and maintaining the dog park is on an annual basis.
Yeah, so that is a hard, uh, number to, uh, come up with. Um, a lot of the maintenance, uh, that you're seeing is done in-house. Uh, so we are utilizing our, uh, own equipment or tractors. Uh, we're utilizing our own staff to do all the maintenance. Uh, we're, uh, coordinating, uh, and repurposing wood shifts from projects that we're doing on Fiscalini Ranch, uh, to, uh, lower the cost of operations at the dog park. Uh, I think the biggest cost that you see at the dog park is that staff, uh, time that is being spent there. Again, I, I don't have, um, a, a number that I can give you because we've never tracked, uh, expenses for the dog park.
Stan?
Um, I have a question. I use the dog park all the time and, um, I was wondering, and, and I asked some of the guys that were talking about the new board and all that. Um, who pays for the poop bags?
Yeah, so for, uh, many years, the old, um, board, uh, was a member of Slow Post. And the old board, uh, had a membership, uh, a, a group of members that would pay a, a small fee to be part of that membership. Uh, that board also applied for some grants, uh, to facilitate the maintenance of the dog park. Slow Post, uh, held that, uh, money. And for a while, uh, Tim Roach, uh, was, um, ordering the doggy bags and Slow Post would be paying for, for those doggy bags. Uh, since his passing away, the CSD has now taken over paying for those doggy bags. So the last couple of, uh, orders, uh, which is about eight to nine months worth of doggy bags has been paid by the CCSD.
Uh, the reason why I was asking is because for years what I've done is I've sent a check, you know, like quarterly to, um, to the dog, to the dog park committee and, um, uh, the last one didn't get cashed, I don't think. Uh, might had to do with, you know, mortality and all that, but, um, we use a lot of bags. And, and, and I don't think it's really fair for the CCSD to have to, um, uh, absorb that cost because it must be substantial.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, uh, Stan. Thank you for that comment. Uh, so the, the new group of volunteers is, uh, is looking to ease that burden on the CCSD again. I've already, um, I've been at all these meetings with them. I've sort of, uh, been hel- holding their hand as they're forming. Uh, and they're ve- very excited to not only cover some of those costs, but actually do the work themselves.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kitty?
Um, you're gonna see some deceptive signage at the dog park. I don't know if Carlos knows this, but Shelley borrowed some of our mutt mitts signs from us that say that FFRP pays for the mutt mitts. Um, we don't pay for the mutt mitts at the dog park, but they, they needed some signs to discourage people from taking handfuls of them home. Um, so, and that's what these signs are meant to do. So as a temporary measure, until they get their own graphic identity and money going, you'll see these signs there, but, um, credit is not due to us. Just want you to know that. Not trying to take credit for someone else's poop bags.
Kitty, what's, what do you pass the FFRP every year in poop bags?
Oh, we buy ninety-six thousand poop bags a year. Um, I think it costs about eight thousand dollars. And I've gotten, in the time that I've been here, one, one donation towards them specifically. It's kind of a hard fundraising pitch.
Yeah, no, no.
The poop pitch.
As soon as the dog park people get organized, there's money in town to assist with that, I think. If, uh, they just go to the right people and, um, but they need to be organized and on top of that game at the dog park. And I, you know, the poop bag is a crucial piece of the whole thing. So anyway, nice work. I can't, I can't be more happy than to see a group at the dog park come together to relieve the CCSD of that burden.
Yeah.
So, any other questions on Carlos's report?
Yeah, I'll just finalize my saying this, you know, I'm excited to see, uh, that group of, uh, folks at the dog park. I've, you know, I've said that, uh, parks, trails, open spaces are only as good as the people behind it. So I'm excited to see all these folks that are excited about the dog park and, uh, you know, we'll see, hopefully we'll see some fundraising and some good events there.
Yeah, that's good. Nice work. Kermit?
Uh, just a thanks to Carlos for keeping on top of that and his management of that dog park is, is really been, frankly, beneficial for the dog park group. They don't, they don't know it, but, um, he's held that together pretty well. So congratulations and thank you.
Yeah, I concur, Kermit. That was not supposed to be on the plate of the CCSD when we built that thing. So way to hold it together, Carlos. All right, uh, let's, seeing that, let's go back to just straight up public comment on issues not on the agenda. Would that be a correct assessment of things to do?
Yes, I think Alderwood had a comment on the, um, the, the.
All right, Mr. Calderwood, we are gonna go ahead and we, we're gonna call you to the mic. There you go. Perfect. Go ahead.
My goodness, I don't know if I can remember where I was.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I was just, uh, interested in the conversation about the, uh, the endorsements and recommendations to the board. Couple of things maybe that we keep in mind as we have these conversations about what, what to do and what not to do. Are you asking the board to do anything? It didn't feel Kitty like in your presentation. There was a request for action from the board, money, whatever it might be. So it's just more informational. Uh, it definitely falls under the purview of this organization. Uh, it's an ongoing concern. And the issue with recommendations and support with the swimming pool that came up last time was driven by it being a non-affiliated outside organization that was, uh, asking for support from the board. So that was a legitimate reason to say, well, let's not bring this to the board. It's got nothing to do with the CCSD. It's separate. This does, and it makes sense. So when these discussions come up, the question to ask might be, are we asking them to, to take an action? Or are we asking for an action that requires their authority? Other than that, you can recommend a way, I, my point of view, and perhaps when Steve does his, uh, his update at the next board meeting, it's just included in there, and it could probably be a conversation point in the agenda item today around priorities and things like that. It seems to me it's a, it's a, a very sensible and needed project that should fall into that priority discussion. So there's that. And just a, a, a co- a comment, I am constantly overwhelmingly impressed by the professionalism and the, and the just dedication of Kitty and of Julie. It is really a joy, uh, to hear these two present and the work that they do is just phenomenal. It, it's such a benefit to the community. That's really, uh, inspirational and I think I would love to see the next generation of kids coming up, watch one of these meetings or watch these two in action, uh, because they really are, uh, beyond role models. Excellent work. So thank you for that.
Thank you. I'm not sure completely what Michael is referring to since I missed out on that part of the discussion. Uh, but are there, does anybody wanna comment on Michael's comment? All right, everyone's comfortable. Adolf, you got your finger up?
Uh, Steve, actually the discussion had to do with, uh, us endorsing the work that Kitty had talked about on the boardwalk and et cetera. And there was some confusion we had before about what we could endorse and not endorse. Maybe you can clarify that for us.
Oh, well.
You just did.
Yeah, I don't think I can clarify it anymore than the discussion that was had on whether it's appropriate for us to endorse things. Is that what we're talking about?
Essentially, yes.
Yeah, I, and, and how did, and what is that following under? That's just under her discussion. Yeah, that's kind of a larger discussion to have underneath her report, isn't it?
But we actually endorsed it, so I think it's the point at this point. Uh, and I will send the endorsement to CCSD.
So we endorsed it under her report?
Right.
Right. Yeah, no, I.
Cause it's a project on CCSD.
I agree. It's kind of, it's like this larger discussion on how you see government, right? We're just an endorsement board. We just say yes and no. We don't have money. So what are we hurting and blah? Yeah, I'm for it. Let's do it. You know, she's building the, the walk, so.
Yeah, yeah, though the way we look at it, Steve, was that the, what Kitty is doing is actually CCSD, CCSD property. And in that respect, uh, and she outlined how she was going to fund it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so since it is CCSD property, we just felt that we could in fact endorse that. Because it's just the CCSD board is going to make up a decision about money.
Yeah. Kitty doesn't even really need our endorsement for the project. She's outside of our purview, isn't she?
No, no, I, we work on the ranch. The ranch is CCSD property.
Yeah, but you don't have to bring us and you don't have to get the okay from us to do work.
Well, it would be, I think, um, um, beyond the pale for the Friends of Fiscalini Ranch Preserve to build a boardwalk on CCSD property without some endorsement from someone at CCSD.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, yeah, that's kind of my point about this whole thing. We're all just trying to be appropriate stewards of government and get things done without doing anything earth-shattering. You know what I'm saying? So when the CC, so when the Prose Commission endorses the pool, let's say, which is a shaky thing to do, I don't feel like it's an earth-shattering thing because there's no money involved. We're just trying to say as a community, this group of people that are gathered here with some authority are saying, they, they think the idea of a pool is a good idea. I don't think that's a, a bad thing for this government to do. Whether it's legal or not, I don't know. That's beyond my thing. Uh, Kermit?
Well, I think some of this touches on the master plan and the things that happen within it. We have some direction there, uh, and we've never looked at it and that's, uh, it pertains a little bit to the duties of CCSD and, and, um, the Prose Commission. And that's kind of, um, uh, it doesn't quite cover Kitty's situation where she's right. There's a, it's a, it's a li- large outlay of money, uh, far and above, beyond maintenance and so forth. Uh, it's a construction project. So it's appropriate, uh, it's like what everything that probably is construction might sure, probably should go through here. And, um, frankly, I'm not even opposed to the pool coming in because maybe we have different ideas where the pools should go. Uh, as if anybody wanted a pool or not. So, uh, yeah, I think we've covered that. Let's go to the next one.
Yeah, yeah, the bike trail, exactly. So anyway, Kitty, good work. You're not asking, you're paying for your project, correct?
CCSD is not paying for it.
Yeah, you are.
Yeah.
Friends, yeah.
We'll see.
But it, but it does encumber CCSD lamps.
Sure.
That project is there and paid for and has to be, maintenance is the issue with, where all this.
In, in general, prose basically is just, uh, letting the community know what people have suggested that we should be involved in things like parks and recreation.
Yeah.
And we're just kind of funneling that information back into the public.
Yes. Yeah. All right, great. Let's move on. All right, so we're, uh, we're past public comment. FFRP update on plans connecting the trail bluff. We're good with that too. Is that correct?
Right.
So now, and facilities and resource consent agenda. Are we all right there? Good. We need it, we need an approval for the minutes held on July fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Let's sub motion.
I get them. Yes, from Kermit. Can I get a second? I get a second from Terry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. All right, now to regular business. We need to form an ad hoc committee to look and review the park plan and prioritize the remaining projects. Are we following that? That seems straightforward to me. All right, who's gonna be on that committee? I need two people.
I could, I could provide a little background, Steve.
All right, go ahead.
Before you, uh, ask for, uh, for volunteers or volunteer folks.
Yeah. I was gonna appoint them. I'm the host. I can do that.
So item six A on your agenda is to consider and discuss, uh, forming an ad hoc committee to review the current community park plan and prioritize our remaining projects. So as a little bit of a background on this item, on May twelfth, uh, the Board of Directors had a item on their, uh, board agenda. And that item was, uh, discuss and consider providing guidance to the Parks Preparation and Open Space Commission regarding its top priorities. From that discussion at that May twelfth meeting, the board recommended the following to the Prose Commission. They moved to direct the Prose Commission to review the current community park plan for the Fiscalini East Ranch. Prioritize from that plan the top three viable projects and return to the board with their prioritized, prioritized recommendations. Now, following that May twelfth board meeting, uh, the CSD held a strategic day-long workshop on June twenty-eighth. Uh, from that meeting, the board continued that guidance to pros and had a number of goals for the Facilities and Resources Department along with the pros. Uh, one of those goals is, uh, to present to the board those pros' recommendations. So following that guidance that the board has given pros, uh, the discussion for this item is not really to discuss the, uh, amenities of that park plan, but rather to discuss forming an ad hoc committee to work with the Facilities and Resources Manager to come back to Prose Commission with a list of those amenities, possibly maps, and to have a full discussion of prioritizing those amenities. Uh, hopefully, uh, next month. So that's the background on that.
Well, Carlos, that's, it, when you say proposed list of amenities, what they're looking for is a list of projects possibly into the future. Uh, that's really different than the kind of the master plan, which covers the kind of principles more so than it does specific items. And, um, so you're really not, you're talking about, instead of the master plan, you're talking about a list of, and a, a list of proposed actions to occur. Is that correct? Do I get, do I get that right?
So as the Prose Commission is aware, uh, currently, uh, there is a project in progress at the community park. Uh, that is the, the restroom project, uh, that is going through permitting. It has, um, funding for it and we're looking to get that built, uh, here in the near future. Uh, as a little bit of a background, uh, when we did the phase one project of the, uh, uh, park, the county advised us that any future projects, any amenities, uh, would require that restroom. So now that the restroom is, um, looking forward to getting built, that opens up the door for all these other, uh, projects to move forward. So the board is looking, uh, for pros to look at the remaining projects that are already listed on that project and bring back the recommendations of what the Prose Commission thinks the next phase, uh, should be.
Well, I guess my, my only concern would be, I don't think we're smart enough for that. The, the projects proposed now are things that probably weren't even on the, the drawing boards. Uh, one is Julie walks in with a skate park. That's something that we had on hand, but was going to disappear. But we had no clue which direction that was gonna go at the time we were tearing that thing down. Uh, the, uh, proposals that we make, uh, on the Bicycle Committee probably aren't anything that the Prose Commission would be proposing anyway. And frankly, um, I don't, I would just as soon see sort of an open space. Part of this has to do with, with who, when we're looking for a sponsor and who owns this thing. This thing does talk about joint use agreements. This thing talks about the, um, uh, establishing guidelines for in implementing parks and recreation programs, things that happen, combination, combined with combination of funds and so forth. It, it leaves a, it builds a doorway for other things to happen. And frankly, I would rather have things walk in off the street like the, uh, swim pool project that people are proposing rather than our little brain trust coming up with a, uh, a set list that, that, um, has projects in it. So, uh, that's probably not where I would, I think we ought to go. I think we ought to go with revising this to make it more amenable for projects to walk in off the side rather than us build a list. Because everything we see that we're going to build now is sort of on the table, but other things will, as the community changes, so will we in our priorities. Uh, and we can, we can project two to three years out because that's how long funding takes. But I don't think any further than that. Is that what they're looking for?
Yeah, so I think, I think you're talking about two different things, uh,
Yeah.
Mr. Dawson. So, uh, I think what you're discussing is to revise that master plan. And, uh, what the board is actually, uh, giving guidance, uh, for the Prose Commission is just to look at the community park plan. Uh, so there's already a planned place for the community park, uh, with amenities already listed on those, uh, description of those amenities. Uh, the Prose Commission just needs to look at those amenities and prioritize, uh, and provide some, some feedback to the board on what they believe are the top three items.
So, uh, just, just a clarification. It seems, it seems to me that we had a community park plan. We had phase one where ba- basically with all of the grading that was done and that also included, I think, the dog park. And then we talked about the phase two and that was what we now consider, I think, phase two as being the addition of a restroom on the, uh, community park. And then thirdly, we're talking about whether or not we were actually going to have some active recreation fields, for example, soccer fields and other, uh, activities that might happen around that area as maybe a third phase. At least that's how I recall it, just kind of anecdote, anecdotaly. So I'm not quite sure what they're asking us to do because we've been through phase one, it's grading a dog park. Phase, and I guess parking lot was part of that. Uh, phase two is the restroom. Phase three was the recreation fields that we were talking about earlier. I'm not sure if there's anything else.
Yeah. Julie, what do you got?
Thanks, Steve. I just wanna know if Kitty and I, if you are looking to put a committee together, do we qualify to be part of one of the members of that committee? I'm asking for myself.
Uh, does anybody have a legal, what I was hoping was that we would have two board members and then anybody else could be a submem, you two could be submembers of that committee.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, Kitty obviously can speak for herself. I don't wanna volunteer.
Kitty, what do you think of that?
As ex officios, I'd like to know if we qualify and if so, I'm very interested in being part of that committee.
Okay, good question. We'll answer that in a minute. Joyce, do you have something you wanna add to the discussion?
Well, I think, I don't know how aware you are of next-door neighborhood, but I think there's a procedure out there, a push to do something more concrete, and I'm speaking of concrete, uh, trail on the east ranch. And they haven't come to pros and they haven't asked us, but they're taking a survey. So, um, we might be aware of that when our plan, uh, when we decide on what we want to do with the ranch. I think we're, I think we should go ahead with the ranch and, and develop it a little bit.
Yeah, so let's, I, we, we are literally talking about the bottom of the pyramid and we are at the top here. Let's form the, my idea is this, we need, once the bathroom starts getting in the ground, everybody's gonna start going, okay, here we go. We wanna be ahead of that. And we're gonna be ahead of that by having our little list of priorities, one, two, and three, whatever they are. I think the first discussion is gonna be coming to the realization that we're not building playing fields out there. I don't know who we have to say that to, to stamp that, that that's not really part of the discussion. And if somebody's got an idea for that, this is the time to say it because we're gonna put that aside. I can handle that explanation to people that are gonna say it to us. Why did you spend three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to grade an area that you're not gonna put a playing field on there? We can put a playing field on there and if it's someday we need to put a playing field on there. We can put a playing field on there and if it's someday we need to put a playing field on there, we'll put it there. But water and money and the lack of kids needing that says no to that. That takes us to the next spot. Now what are we going to do? And that's where we're at. We need to figure out what the trail is and paved trail, not paved. I wanted to add to that conversation. Joyce that I saw go on it. I think cobblestones are the awesome way. Let's just cobblestone every path and the whole area and that'll be natural and beautiful. It'll just take thirty years to make. But anyway, it's great that the conversation is going on. It needs to be held in the public. That's where the two board members running the little committee. The neighborhood is going to be important to address. I want to be receptive to their ideas. They probably won't be happy with what's going on. But I want them in the conversation. But we need to, and the bike people, but we need two board members that are kind of going to have to throw themselves into this. Right? Because we're kind of right now at a spot where we're really going to make a real decision. Does anybody have a passion for it?
Can I make one?
Adolf, go ahead.
Well, I I keep looking at Kermit as since Kermit has kind of engrossed himself and he's taken on some projects about what might be the future for paths, et cetera, and that might be a natural fit for him. Sorry, Kermit.
Well, Adolf in fine Cambria fashion volunteering is not recommending somebody else.
I understand that. I understand that, but I'm looking at.
I was thinking Julie's and I, good ideas. She gets a lot of stuff done.
I understand that, but I was looking at resources we have and getting things done. And I think that would be, this is my suggestion. I mean, I understand and Kermit would have to decide for himself, obviously.
Yeah, but somebody's going to have to kind of organize the meeting and make a date and have a meeting with community members and kind of, you know, do that thing that we need to do. Are you in agreement with my assessment of how I see this playing out? Harry, do you want to comment? You're looking inquisitive at your screen.
No, I'm just, I'm totally fascinated, Steve, by how you just took over and made a very, you know, professional and totally accurate presentation as to where things are right now and how to move forward in this area. And I, it seemed like planned spontaneity. That that you must have given this a lot of thought and then it sounds like it just came off right off the top of your head.
Well, I've been living it for twenty years now.
Right? But you did, you did a great job.
All right. Well, we still need two people. I I would do it. I'll be one of the people, but I, it would, it just seems like it would be better if it was two other people. I'm going to go to the meetings. I'm going to put Kermit.
I'll go for one. I'll go, I'll volunteer for one person. For the committee.
Joyce?
Um, I'm ready to volunteer.
All right, that would be good. That will be two little different kind of spheres of influences. I will enjoy having Joyce and Kermit working together. Julie? Your hand is up?
Yeah, again, I'd love to join this committee. I I also think what's really a critical discussion to be made during that time is the opportunity to go into thinking about forming a foundation or a five oh one C three. The future of recreation is not going to lay, and we know this, in the lap of C C S D. These projects cannot continue to be funded by fundraising efforts and private money. There has to be a different way to do this, whether it's federal or state funding grants. But I just, I really think it's critical to the future of how recreation is getting done and projects are actually being executed. To get us into a different type of position. And I just, I I want to make that part of the committee's discussion. I also think it's very well framed in, Steve, that you're going to the community and asking them, what is it that you see that you need? Rather than doing it from the inside and going, here's our list and the community is just going to like it. It makes them part of the dialogue and the discussion. But I just cannot urge enough that you can't keep relying on the public to fund projects because they are going to get tired and it's already happened. People are looking around going, well, I gave to the pickleball, I gave to the schoolhouse, I gave to the state park. And and I think, you know, to Kitty's point, I mean, it's wonderful to get things like plaque placements and bricks and but I mean, there there has to be, these are getting more expensive as construction costs are elevated. And and we know this. I mean, a half million dollars seems like a big number and it it really isn't. So I'm urging this committee to think beyond just coming up with a list of things.
I have a comment for that.
Kermit?
The the park plan actually has a phase where she talk, they talk about that type of thing to form an adequate parks and recreation space in conjunction with this, but future funding, including regulatory process and innovative strategies. So we have that in our direction and we've never done it, frankly, as far as I'm concerned. That would be the committee that would be most valuable because the projects will walk in on their own. And the, but the taxing process won't. And we probably should be looking at long term funding for a typical of parks and recreation district. You know, that is the, and if it's not the C C S D, then it's own separate little district and they cooperate from there and that's it.
Joyce?
Well, policy wise, I don't think C C S D is looking for us to do that, actually. I think they're looking for ideas to come forward so that they can proceed with what they you know, whether they say yes or no. I don't think that we are going to be able to be our own entity. We've already found out that we really can't, I think.
Okay, Kitty.
I don't think C C S D is, which is their plan right here has said that they're not interested in in funding a parks and recreation district for taxes because they have. And then, and I think the incentive is they'd be happy to assist us. It's not outside of C C S D. It's a addendum to C S C S D. We are marching, we aren't trying to change anything except to find a funding mechanism for a parks and recreation district.
Yes.
About confines of C C S D review.
There is truth to all this. Kitty?
I would love to be on this subcommittee or task force. It it provided we get the written guidance from Carlos that C C S D board is looking for.
Right.
Oh, okay. So and Carlos, do you have something?
In in writing, Carlos. Lovely that you read it out to us, but I I need to like I'll need to read it more than once.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. So I think we're, we're starting to get a little off track a little bit here as far as what the guidance is for from the board. So again, the board isn't looking for us to look at the master plan and look for us to look for the post commission to look at the community park plan. As the commission knows, the community park plan has already had extensive public input over the years. It has had an environmental impact report, projects for that community park were already chosen. What the board is asking the commission to do is to look at those projects that have already been approved for the park that have already been through the environmental impact report and to prioritize those projects. The board also assigned me as your assistant for this project, so you won't be doing it by yourselves. I'm I'm here to support you and to provide guidance and documents that you need to make the decision.
Okay, hold on. So if let's, let me try to simplify it in my mind. So we, they just want to know what we're going to build next, those three things. But the reality that Julie and Kermit are kind of hammering on, it's going to be more stuff that we're going to build that the C C S D is going to have to take care of without having a parks and recreation department. Right? And they're also going to have the skate park. So all of a sudden, we're building the stuff that Carlos has to do without a parks and recreation department funded by taxpayers. Julie saying, we need to come over here and make ourselves a nonprofit that runs the parks like they do in Templeton and these other things. And we were whiffing at that smelling that before twenty twenty and COVID. There was a group, there was a discussion. That's not the discussion this committee is going to have. Julie's point and that discussion is going to come to fruition very soon, but that's not the group. That's not what this group is doing. This group is just going to make that wish list of the three things that we could possibly do on the park. After we get that bathroom built. Is that a correct assessment?
I I think so.
Because we are going to have to have a parks department at some point or a nonprofit entity that's funding the parks department, whatever we call it.
Just one other comment. You know, we're a town of supposedly six thousand people. And we get ten thousand people per weekend coming to visit us all the time. We're also providing them with recreation. And it seems to me that the county then has to be somehow linked to some of these things we're talking about. And possibly through our, whoever happens to become the supervisor of our district to say that Cambria is willing to do certain things, except you're going to have to help us put some of this stuff together.
That is correct. And and the Cambria Tourism Board has money to assist in things too. But they don't want to give it to the government. It's a tough give. But they're happy to give it to the Parks and Rec nonprofit organization that's not the government take care of the parks. Is that correct? Right? That's where the nonprofit is seems to be the better way to go than forming the park, the the department within the C C S D. Carlos, do you have that opinion or do you want to weigh in or do you have to be quiet because?
I'll be quiet.
Yeah, all right. The point is, let's say this, to get this discussion moving, Kermit and Joyce are going to be the ad hoc committee to do the 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 research on the projects for the park. Is that correct? And if it is, would somebody make that motion?
That's my understanding, but I'm not sure it's Kermit's understanding.
I'm want a bigger, no, I I don't disagree with Julie. I, the question is, what is Carlos looking for? I I think we need that committee and and I think we need to talk about tax annexation districts and another and and the the nonprofit you're talking about, although I don't understand that. Because tax is going to be a tax district, in my opinion, to be fair. The, but either way, the one's a big picture scope and the other one's for next month. There's, there's a lot of difference when next month is almost one or two meetings. The the other big picture is what we ought to be concentrating on is going to take a lot longer. And I don't know if it's a small select committee or the one we're in right now. So I think there's two committees. I think the subjects are different. Entirely. And and I think one's got to do with the cleaning up the rec, you know, rewriting some of the chapters in here one at a time. Where it talks about funding, we take that and then we write down exactly the plan of action, bring that to the board for approval. And if they approve, then we we start trying to figure out how to start that implementation. So I would say make two committees. They're free, they're cheap. If you can get people working on them. But I I'm not sure that that what Carlos isn't frankly, the next week, next month's meeting. Because that's all I see it as. You know, we're, we're picking from a list of of stuff. It's pretty simple. It's got confines. It's it works within his purview of what, how, what we understand now from the last master plan. And the other one is frankly, just changing the parks and recreation world. And that's what we ought to do because it's it's out, it's outdated, outmoded and it's as big as it's going to get in the existing form and it can't exist that way and 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 do anything for the community. Two committees.
Well, we're having a hard enough time getting one. I don't know how we're going to get two.
One is the next one's meeting. We we just go through the list that Carlos has. It's not that involved. It may be two meetings.
Yeah, it should be pretty simple. Kitty, save us.
Well, I think you can't go through that list without having this bigger picture in mind of how funding opportunities have changed since nineteen eighty or whenever the plan was made. And now what funding opportunities are available. You can pick something from the list that's unfundable, but that would not be very helpful for anyone. So it's, it's actually a little bit bigger than just picking your top favorites from the list, in my opinion. It would be more useful for the community if we kept a larger picture in mind, an informed picture of where funding's coming from and how the community has changed, like the gun range, I think, is probably off the table. And the golf course is off the table. You know, there's a lot of changes since since that plan, but I feel like you have C C S D's board who wants to build something in the community park. We should help them. We've been complaining for many years that nothing happens there and this is an opportunity to help things happen. I would like to be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're asking for it.
Just, just to add on Kermit's comments and obviously Julie, I think she's on point as far as funding and I think we've had the discussion many, many years. I for one, I'm always looking for that because once a project is built, it's my responsibility to keep that project going. So there's nobody more focused on how to keep projects going than myself because ultimately they're going to fall in my lap. However, the discussion for today is just to look at forming a subcommittee for the community park. So the item isn't verbalized upon two committees to look at two different projects. All we're looking at is one subcommittee for this project.
So it would be okay if their purview that they looked at the funding mechanisms too?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, there you go, Kermit. Now that, now that you're the leader of the huge bureaucratic movement to form a new part of C C S D, Kermit wants to tax everybody in Cambria.
No, I was, I I was saying we. There was a we there. Did you not hear the we? We should.
No, I'm happy. We need to do it. It's the right thing to do. We need to figure it out. We need to be grownups.
No, I think Julie.
Kermit wants to tax the people in Paso to pay for our parks and I think it'll pass unanimously in town.
It's a tax district, not a
But we're there. I, you know, it's, it's a, I think it's a positive thing. I think it's something that can be accomplished. You know, people are into it. It's not water and sewer. It's parks and fun and I think it can happen.
All right, I'm going to chime in really quick and I agree. I I think there needs to be a long term solution. And the list, I mean, so Carlos, in all due respect to C C S D. Let's say we come back and go, we need a soccer field. It's in the list. We need a soccer field. We know all the reasons why a soccer field can't happen right now. So it it just seems like a it it seems like a movement or a motion that really doesn't have purpose. And I I'm trying to understand why we're using time and people's time in committees. I I just want to see us moving towards things that actually get done. And all I constantly hear is we have no money. We have no money. We have no money for recreation. So where's the money going to come from when we pick something off the list? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Very good point.
Well, I was hoping you would kind of be prudent and tell your kids, well, you can't have that. We were looking I like just, aren't we just trying to figure out what kind of trail to build around the outside of it or walking trail?
No, Steve, they're asking for the the list from the last fifteen to twenty years, which has a number of things on it.
We're not going to get the gun range and the golf course, you know, we're just trying to figure out if we're going to DG the trail or if we're going to pave it, you know? But no, you guys are correct. I'm not disagreeing with your assessment that it, that it is a much larger issue than that. All right, where are we? Somebody going to make a motion?
Well, let's, let's put it this way. I'm worried about Julie and I run into committee. Her plate's full, I'm sure, because she jumps out and grabs everything that she thinks is important and that's quite a few things. And my plate's full with you know, another major issue plus the 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 thing I'm in. So we're what you're talking about, when you start down, this other this other parks and recreation old print space and then looking at the mechanisms for funding, that's a pretty big committee. And I'm not sure that because we are not gifted in government ins and outs in the big picture, that it's two people, it may be two people from this committee. But it's also got to do with CCSD board. If we're going to work with that, someone has to be familiar with the workings of the world outside of bigger picture than just us. And I'd like to hear Michael Calderwood's comment on, on that. And, and what he would suggest we do in this particular situation, because he seems to have a big picture of government here. And Harry, Harry's got a pro, should have a, an issue in this thing also. I'd like to hear those two, what the big picture.
I actually would like to hear Mr. Calderwood too. Yes, I would. Are you out there, Mr. Calderwood?
Sorry, I ran out of coffee. You know, I, I, I think I've been pretty consistent in, in my view of this, for at least the past year or so. You know, I think the simplest approach would be to look at what exists. Knock off the stuff, all the stuff, Steve, you identified soccer fields and shooting ranges and golf courses. Boom, clear, clean it up. Clean up what exists today, come into today's world, the reality, then figure out of those things, what are the things, to Julie's point, are feasible, doable and achievable in a relatively short period of time, and just increment your way forward. A long-term plan, I don't know how you can come up with a long-term plan. Uh, because I don't foresee anything drastically changing, either in the economy or the town, that is going to enable uh, the community to continue on the way it is with unfunded obligations for parks and recreation. How do you solve that problem? I don't know at this point in time, but I think keep it simple. Go back to the original plan, knock out all the, I almost used the word there, knock out all the stuff that's not realistic and feasible. Pick the three things you want to work on and just start driving forward with that. Long-term is a bigger picture. I, I don't have an answer for that right now, but I promise I will think about it. As a.
Thank you.
Totally unhelpful, right?
Well, I, I'm always happy to hear a smart person say they don't know.
Well, the next time I find a smart person, I'll ask them to try.
Right on. Uh, Harry, do you have something you want to add?
Well, Steve, it's interesting while, while Michael was talking, what came into my head was with regard to, well, what do we want at the community park? And I think it was Kermit that said, well, we're serving both the people that live here as well as people that are visiting. But I think my main concern in the skate park has a lot to do with this, serving folks that live here that feel as if they're kind of being ignored. The youth is one example. The, they say, I hesitate to use the term minority, but the Hispanic community. I don't feel that they feel as if their needs are being addressed. So when I think about having a soccer field, like right now, probably they can use the soccer fields that say out at the high school. Or perhaps they use Shammel Park in that regard. But I think having soccer fields, and that's people, no matter what age, enjoy playing soccer. And I'm just thinking that that would definitely be a direction to go in. And I just want to mention one more thing that you brought up, Steve, with regard to cobblestones. Because folks are talking about a concrete path. And when I think of nature, which is what we're talking about with regard to the ranch and something that will supplement or supplement or be in so, something that will enhance nature. I don't feel like concrete is going to do that. There's enough of that in the world. It's doing as much harm as good. But cobblestones seem like something that is closer to nature, that is attractive. Uh, that would give us a, a warmer feeling with regard to whatever's going on out there. Um, so that, that's my, that's my take on it. I don't know if that's of any real value, but that's, that's how I feel.
Thank you, Harry. Adolf?
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment. In a sense, we kind of have to know where we are now. Where are we now? Kind of that, that, that definition of, you know, where are we? And then I guess the idea of prioritizing something means is what do we want in the near future? What, what are we deciding about in the near future? Maybe that's a year or two out, who knows? And, and as far as a long-term plan is concerned, I think the comment about long-term was probably correct in that. We, we, we kind of cycle a lot. Somebody comes up with an idea, we look at their idea, and we decide whether or not that's feasible or not. And what we really want, if we want to talk about government, is an efficient government, somebody who actually gets something done that we want. And the question is, is how do we then approach what we have as government? And how we can accomplish that through whatever dialogue we need to talk to them about accomplishing the goals. And and all of that is, you know, every so many years, we elect a new board. They revitalize how the process is done, and we go on to the next board and do the same thing. And the question is, there's a lot of stuff that doesn't get done that they talked about doing because their term is up and somebody else is taking over. So the question is, how do we make sure we have our priorities and vice, and we are marching toward that final goal? That's what I have to say.
Thank you. All right.
How, how about this? How about we pick the small committee first to work with Carlos? And we table this discussion for the next one to talk and make that. Why don't we all do the big picture one?
Yeah, that's what I, I agree, Kermit. Yeah, that was what the agenda item was. Get a couple of you, pick a couple of little pissant projects and move down the road. Because in that discussion, you're going to say, I want a big thing, and they're going to say, there's no money for the big thing. And that's going to be the discussion, right? And that's where we all need to be in that group is figuring out how we're going to do the big project.
I'll be a member of the small committee.
Perfect. So Joyce and Kermit, somebody make a motion. They're going to be the member of the small committee. They're going to put that thing together, but we are as a group making a conscious agreement that we're going to try to figure out this big picture. And Julie's an ad hoc member of this committee, so she going to be in it too.
Okay, I make the motion.
I have a motion to have Kermit and Joyce add, be the ad hoc committee to help Carlos with accomplishing the goal that has been set before us by the, uh, CCSD. Do I have a second for that? Uh, Terry seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kermit, you say aye. He said aye too.
Question, question.
Go ahead, Joyce.
Uh, Carlos, will you get in touch with us as to when and where and what?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Carlos has been kind of charged by his bosses is leading this group to the promised land. Kitty?
Could I still be an ad hoc member on that?
Yes, yes, for sure.
Okay.
The, the more the merrier. Yeah, that's important. And, and let us all know so anybody can just chime in and watch. All right. Done with that. Any future agenda items? Thing, yeah, right, nice. Thank you. That, that's it. That's where we're at. We need to figure out who we are and where we're going. All men should know before they die where they're running to, from, and why. That was Thurber. All right. With that, we're going to end the meeting. All in favor of that?
Bye.
Love you all. Thank you. Let's get something done. Mr. Calderwood, thanks for playing. Right on. Bye-bye.
Always a pleasure.